Welcome. Do you have Claire on your next line? We might have lost her. I think I just didn't hear her. She's not there. I don't know if she's there. Claire's here. Oh, good. Welcome. Thanks. We have about thirty seconds.
And in honor of Memorial Day, it is our tradition to pledge allegiance to the flag. And we are honored today to have members of Brownie Troop Two Zero Three Nine Seven, which has includes nineteen second and third grade girls, as well as daisies, juniors, cadets, seniors, and ambassadors, with girls ranging from kindergarten through high school. They meet on Thursdays during the school year at North Eugene Faith Center on River Avenue. And with us today, we have Elizabeth Bowman, Adriana Lamy, Cadence Pisnick, Olivia Garcia, Marlee Wilson, Mia Maza, Jana Thompson, Ada Heinrich, and Peyton Caldwell. And if you would all please come up to the front, and you can lead us. And if we could all stand.
Awesome.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Good job. Good job. Thanks for starting.
We have a piece of business that we will conduct before we open up the public forum.
Good evening, councilors and mayor. Tonight, we're going to hear from one of the candidates who's interviewing for the Sustainability Commission. He was unable to attend the interviews last week, so he's with us tonight, and his name is Jacob Segal.
I am glad to meet you all, and thank you for the opportunity to talk with you tonight regarding the Sustainability Commission. And thank you all for humoring me for a few moments as I talk about myself. So when I received ordination as a rabbi, I joined the staff of an organization that I still work with today that does Jewish values-based investing, so faith-based, values-based investing. In this role, I do advocacy with major U.S. companies on sustainability issues including deforestation, food waste, the Paris Climate Accords, and others. That experience has taught me some crucial skills of practical and on-the-ground change. How do we take broad values about sustainability, leverage community power, and make concrete changes with large institutions? Those are the two most important skills that I bring: a deep grounding in integrity and values through my training as a rabbi and through my faith, and experience executing sustainability practically. So sustainability has been important to me for a long time. Several years ago, I co-chaired the largest Jewish environmental conference in the country, featuring speakers including Bill McKibben, the Humane Society. And what inspired me about that role, and what inspires me about the opportunity to work with the Sustainability Commission, is the opportunity to bring community together, to do community organizing in a practical way, to actually achieve solutions to major issues. So please feel free to be in touch. I'm happy to talk more about my qualifications, and I trust you all to make a good decision for this city about the Sustainability Commission. So thank you all. Thank you.
Thank you. Nice, but remember. And do we have one more? No, just one. Okay. All right. Okay. Now, we will open the public forum. The public forum is an opportunity for individuals to speak to the City Council on any city-related issues except for those items which have already been heard by hearings official or are on tonight's agenda as a public hearing. Each person will have three minutes to speak. When you come to the podium, please give your name, city of residence, and for Eugene residents, your ward if known. The timer and lights indicate the time you have to speak. The red light indicates the end of three minutes. And we are beginning... Oh, and just a reminder that approval, we try to make this a safe and welcoming place for everybody, and so you can always show your approval this way, but we ask you in other ways to kind of restrain your outbursts or emotions about what you hear. So thank you all for being here. It's great to have a full room again, talking about issues that matter to us all. So first up, we have Jennifer Frenzer-Nolton, followed by Kevin O'Brien.
I'm Jennifer Frenzer-Nolton, and I'm in Betty Taylor's Ward. Tonight, I have two human rights topics to discuss. First, a social and environmental justice topic on behalf of the Eugene Human Rights Commission. At our last meeting, the Eugene Human Rights Commission unanimously approved support and principle for the draft ordinance to end the city contract with U.S. Bank. And we found this to be a logical next step for council to recommend, following the passing of the No Doppel Resolution this winter, and also in support of the Indigenous Peoples' We found that this was putting words into action, and taking principles and moving principles into action that underlie both these resolutions. So we ask that you take the next step with this draft ordinance as you consider this draft ordinance that's been put forth to you. We feel that this signals noncooperation by our city in terms of environmental abuse, and also associating with firms, doing business with firms whose ethics and business practices, such as U.S. Bank, are questionable, or worse, in terms of supporting businesses that violate human rights. Please be on the right side of history with this ordinance. The second item is, I'm speaking on my own behalf, and then that's concerning shelter, and I'm hoping that before the rains come this year, that we can take action in terms of funding, instead of being behind the ball again. So please find a way to expand our emergency shelter programs, both indoor and outdoor. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Kevin O'Brien, followed by Coriel Ridda White.
Good evening, councilors and mayor. My name is Kevin O'Brien. I'm a member of the Sustainability Commission, and I am here tonight representing the Commission. At our past two Sustainability Commission meetings, we have heard public comment encouraging the Commission to make a recommendation to City Council to divest from U.S. Bank because of their funding for the Dakota Access Pipeline, among other pipelines. We appreciate members of the public bringing this environmental justice issue to our attention. The Commission has discussed the idea of divesting from U.S. Bank. Our discussions resulted in the following three actions. Number one, commissioners requested a presentation on the city's sustainable procurement policy. We want to learn more about how the city incorporates sustainability in all purchasing decisions. Number two, commissioners are looking into whether other cities are divesting from U.S. Bank, and if they are, what that process looks like. Number three, finally, on a five-to-three vote, commissioners passed a motion on which we request council to take action. I will read that motion to you now. The Sustainability Commission asks the City Council to direct the city manager to, A, report the criteria for divestment from the U.S. Bank Corporation, and B, provide information on the current policy of U.S. Bank in regards to money being invested in oil pipelines. We hope you take action and support this motion. We believe it is a reasonable next step to evaluate this community concern. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Next up, Coriel Ridda White, followed by Peter Ogura.
Good evening, mayor and councilors. My name is Coriel Ridda White, program director with Our Children's Trust, resident of Ward One. The city website says that each of you, as councilors, are, quote, "responsible for passing laws, setting community goals, adopting policy, and deciding which services the city will provide." You're the city officials tasked with running the city government, and according to the city charter, quote, "The purpose of the city government is to serve the public. City officials shall treat their office as a public trust," end quote. I know you guys do this out of a sense of duty to Euginians, and future Euginians not for any great financial compensation, and I really respect that. Thankfully, to carry out these important duties, the charter instills in your seats a great deal of authority and broad power. Quote, "Except as this charter provides, to the contrary, all power of the city is vested in the City Council, the representative legislative body of the city. You, the council, pass ordinances which are city laws. You vote on proposed policies and plans. I respect you guys for this service, just as I respect the seats you sit in for guarding the public trust. The city manager also holds a vital seat. Again, pursuant to the charter, the city manager, quote, 'shall enforce all ordinances, prepare and furnish all reports requested by the council, perform other such duties as the council directs,' among other responsibilities. The city manager has a duty to enact and adhere to our laws while also providing you, the council, with virtually any helpful information you ask for. Especially as trust in our national elected officials continues to erode, please do not lose sight of the duty you owe Euginians, or the broad power you have to carry out that duty. Before and during Wednesday's work session on the TSP, please request of the city manager's office any reports you would find helpful. Please have them submit a real triple bottom-line analysis around the TSP, and accounting of greenhouse gases that are associated with this proposed plan. It's within your power. Please, on Wednesday, use this as an opportunity to show the residents of Eugene the respect you have for the seats you occupy, and an understanding of the power it holds. Thank you."
Thank you. Peter Ogura, followed by Vic Hariton.
May it please the council. My name is Peter Ogura. I'm a resident of Ward Two, Betty Taylor's district. I am here to urge the council to oppose the proposed total ban on the consumption of alcohol in all public parks. I think at the outset, there should be an extended comment period. Like everyone else, none of us learned about this proposed ban until the Register Guard article appeared on Thursday, March eighteenth. The public comment period expired 5:00 P.M. on Friday, the very next day. I realize that they probably complied with a small print notice, but for effective purposes, nobody really had enough advance notice to submit their opinions on this. Second point is, we feel that a total ban on alcohol in every park unnecessarily criminalizes otherwise lawful behavior. My neighbors occasionally gather at our local park for impromptu picnics. We have wine with our meals sometimes. Our children are there. It has never been a problem from any law enforcement point of view, ever. We're very mindful about remaining twenty-five feet from any playground structure, and we have always respected that. The article stated that, in the newspaper, stated that the public was extremely confused by a complicated maze of regulations. I really take issue with that. Certainly, that's not been the case with our neighbors, ever. We also feel that there are laws already in place which regulate the consumption of alcohol everywhere without having to resort to a blanket ban. There are laws on the books, obviously, concerning disorderly conduct or public drunkenness. These laws should be adequate to deal with any situation. We are also concerned with the fact that the proposed ban may be targeting the homeless. Obviously, if you're homeless, you spend a majority of your time on the street, in parks, other public or open spaces. You'll be eating all your meals there, and maybe even they'll be consuming alcohol there, but the fact that it will create greater entanglements with law enforcement, I think it's the potential for overburdening the court system, and already crowded jail speaks for itself. Finally, as one of my neighbors pointed out, I think in an email to the council already, alcohol is a social lubric... Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. Vic Hariton, followed by Misha Goldberg.
My name is Vic Hariton. I'm in Betty Taylor's Ward Two. Thank you all for letting me speak. I'm here to speak for myself, not as for Sheena. I'm going to read this. It's related to the alcohol ruling for parks and open space. It is obvious to all watching that although the mayor and council and city manager publicly state, and the staff publicly state their concern with the homeless, you are allowing laws to be passed that are passive-aggressively pushing them out of the city. As bad as this is, the result of these laws are also hurting the law-abiding, tax-paying citizens and employ y'all and the city staff. Kelly Parnell, Parks and Open Space, has put forth a new law to prohibit neighbors from being able to share a bottle of wine in their neighborhood park. Our neighborhood has had a tradition over many years of holding a weekly family potluck, which includes wine, sometimes beer. We are responsible neighbors. We care deeply about each other and the park we frequent. Whether the disaster planning or just sharing our lives and our family needs, these potlucks serve a very important role. Will these potlucks continue without the wine? Probably not. Will we be paying for special permits and expensive insurance? Definitely not. I strongly urge the council and city manager to reject this new law or ruling. Do not pass blanket laws that break up neighborhoods. Please start using common sense with these rules. Thank you.
Thank you. Misha Goldberg, followed by Caitlin Bowman.
Can I pass these out? Number one.
Thank you.
I come here representing divest Eugene and Three Fifty Eugene, and proposing this ordinance to you, asking the City Council to divest Eugene's money from U.S. Bank. It's unconscionable that we do bank with a bank that is complicit with the human rights abuses and environmental degradation and exploitation that's been demonstrated in North Dakota over this past year. And I think that we can do much to stand with the global water protector and divestment movement, to show that Eugene does take notice and does care about where our city's money is invested. U.S. Bank has extended a $275 million credit line to energy transfer partners, and although U.S. Bank has just said that they will no longer finance pipelines, this does not extend to all the contracts that they have just recently renegotiated with energy transfer partners, TransCanada and Enbridge. And I really applaud the City Council for approving all the resolutions that you have over these past years, including resolution in support of Standing Rock, Indigenous Peoples' Day, climate recovery ordinance, and fossil fuel divestment. And I think that we can continue along this trend of being a real visionary city and spearheading another ordinance that keeps us accountable to putting our money in socially responsible financial institutions and investments. This is something that Seattle, Standing Rock, Millilock, Nez Perce, San Francisco has already done, divesting money from Wells Fargo, and it's something that L.A., Berkeley, and many other cities are seriously considering with mass support from the public. So as well as there are other initiatives being spearheaded by cities like Portland that have a socially responsible investing committee, where they have just divested from all corporate investments. We are backed by the Human Rights Commission, by Beyond Toxics, Three Fifty, Eugene-Stansfield Standing Rock, Community Alliance of Lynn County. And why I have chosen to do this work here is because I spent a month out at Standing Rock that profoundly showed me how communities are targeted and abused in these extractive, with these extractive industries, and it's so important that we acknowledge the suffering that other communities that are under, and stand with them, because we're one country and one people.
Thank you. Thank you. Caitlin Bowman, followed by Maria Bybee.
My name is Caitlin Bowman, and I live in Ward One. I am also here to ask the council to divest Eugene from U.S. Bank due to its financial support of the Dakota Access, Enbridge, and Keystone Pipelines. Divestment and boycotts have historically been powerful tools for social change, famously playing a key role in ending apartheid in South Africa. I would also like to see Eugene review and potentially strengthen its procurement policies, making sure that funding fossil fuel projects is taken into consideration in the city's bidding process. In divesting from U.S. Bank, Eugene would be in the company of a number of other cities like Seattle, Portland, San Francisco, Minneapolis, Davis, Santa Monica, and Alameda, California, that have taken steps to divest from banks that finance pipeline projects. Many tribes, including the Standing Rock Sioux, Nez Perce, and Millilocks, have done so as well. These groups have sought to eliminate ties to financial institutions like Wells Fargo and U.S. Bank that have put profit ahead of social equity and environmental safety. Eugene should do the same. While it may not be a simple process, these other cities show that it is not an impossible task. We've also heard great interest from the community in looking into local banking options, which Portland is also investigating. Divesting from U.S. Bank would also be consistent with a number of city ordinances and resolutions already in place. First, Eugene passed the climate recovery ordinance as a commitment to lowering Eugene's greenhouse gas emissions. Doing city business with institutions that finance fossil fuel projects is in direct contradiction of this goal. Eugene has also passed a resolution stating our solidarity with protesters at Standing Rock, who fought the Dakota Access Pipeline as a threat to our environment and a violation of indigenous rights. This ordinance that we're proposing is a tangible action beyond mere words that would show the city solidarity with those water protectors. Finally, Eugene has established the triple bottom line that evaluates potential policies in terms of their impact on social equity and environmental health in addition to their economic expediency. Our city's banking contract is a perfect opportunity to put the triple bottom line into action and could prevent us from entering into new contracts with companies funding fossil fuel projects in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Maria Bybee, followed by Sophie Bybee.
My name is Maria Bybee, and I live in Ward One, and I'm here to talk about the details of our proposed divestment ordinance. So it's modeled on Seattle's ordinance, and the purpose of it is twofold. Firstly, it would divest the city of Eugene from U.S. Bank in October of 2018, when our current contract with them expires. U.S. Bank's funding of Keystone, Enbridge, and the Dakota Access Pipeline shows that it does not have the same environmental and social justice goals as the city of Eugene. Therefore, U.S. Bank is not an appropriate banking partner for our city. And while the majority of our city's .5 billion dollar budget is invested in the local government investment pool run by the state treasury, 1.5 million is currently held by U.S. Bank. Divestment of these funds is a concrete and direct step the city of Eugene can take to ensure that we're not supporting environmentally and socially harmful projects, and to publicly denounce U.S. Bank's choices. Secondly, this ordinance includes an amendment to City Code 2.1415, Public Contracts, Authority of the Purchasing Agent. It adds two additional clauses to the standards for contracting rules. To quote, "So that when adopting public contracting rules, the purchasing agent shall establish practices and procedures that..." And then these are the two additions. "F, support conducting city business with partners who are committed to engaging in fair and responsible business practices, and avoid conducting business with partners that engage in criminal or systematically deceptive, fraudulent, or abusive business practices. And H, include consideration of social equity, weighted at a worth of 15%, and environmental health, weighted at a worth of 15%, in addition to economic prosperity, in accordance with the triple bottom line framework. Our intent in adding these clauses is to increase the visibility of the environmental and social costs of different business practices, and ensure that those costs have economic weight when it comes to selecting or renewing contracts with our city. Thank you so much for your time, and we're very grateful for your consideration."
Thank you. Sophie Bybee, followed by Duena Welch.
My name is Sophie Bybee, and I'm a resident of Ward One. I am also here today on behalf of the Eugene divestment campaign. I am here to ask the City Council to take our ordinance into consideration and hold a work session on this issue. Part of this consideration would entail instructing the city manager to begin looking into alternative banking options, such as with a credit union or joining with Portland's investigation into the feasibility of a public bank. Seattle and Davis set the precedent of using the time before their contracts were up to secure an alternative. Eugene's contract with U.S. Bank comes up for review in October 2018, giving the city from now until then to pursue alternative options to renewal. Every day, concrete, direct action is being taken to worsen the effects of climate change, from the ceaseless flow of oil through pipelines to the ceaseless lobbying for loosened environmental regulations. Eugene needs to continue to take direct, concrete action to lessen the effects of climate change, and luckily for us, there's never a better time to do it than now. U.S. Bank is feeling the pressure of divestment. Recently, they announced a divestiture from pipelines. Recently, they announced a divestiture from pipelines. This was unfortunately a greenwashing PR stunt. They will continue to finance current pipeline, they will not continue, they will not finance any more pipeline projects, but will continue to finance the ones they are already involved with, like Dapple. Additionally, they will not use project funds, but this still leaves them able to use general funds for these sorts of projects. While practically meaningless, their new policy does show they're susceptible to pressures by activists and cities. Now's the time to show that we are paying attention and we want more than just green semantics. And when, through our insistence, they learn what social and environmental responsibility look like, then Eugene can be proud to renew our partnership with them. In the current societal model, our lack of active protest is being viewed as our consent for environmental degradation. We cannot let our silence speak for Eugene, we must speak for Eugene. And tonight, the community has come to you to do just that. We sought and received endorsements from 350, the Human Rights Commission, CALC, Beyond Toxic, showing up for racial justice, the Intersextional Peoples' Network of Eugene in Springfield, and Eugene Stands with Standing Rock. And of course, all the people who are behind me wearing the stickers that read Resist,
Thank you. Duena Welch, followed by Sue Sierra Lupe.
Good evening, my name is Duena Welch, I am in Betty Taylor's district, Ward 2. It's nice to see all of you in person, I've read so much about you for so long. I love Eugene, I moved here not quite two years ago. I hesitate to use the T-word, but I'll do it now, I moved from Texas. Yeah, they're the ones that decided that today a really big initiative needed to be to tell people where to go to the bathroom. And I moved because Texas is mean. They're mean. And I don't like it. And I say this as a sixth-generation Texan, I don't like it. And I won't have it. And I didn't move all the way here to see it again. Now, I'm a little embarrassed that the very first thing I'm ever speaking to you about is alcohol in the parks. And there's a couple reasons I'm embarrassed about that. And one of them is, I should have spoken up sooner about other things. And another is, I don't even drink. I've never even been drunk, people. It's not for me. But the thing is, alcohol is the great social lubricant. Do people get out of hand sometimes? Yes. I admit I've got an ex-husband who couldn't handle his liquor. But he would have been stopped on drunken disorderly conduct, folks. There's no reason to penalize everybody in the wonderful city of Eugene who's just trying to get together and get to know their neighbors. One of the things I love about Eugene is I look around this room and I see people I love, even though I have only lived here shy of two years. And some of those people, how I know them is, I go to potlucks with my neighborhood. And a lot of people, you know, who would just eat and run, they stick around because they're sharing a glass of wine with their neighbors. Now, I'm not one of them, I stick around just because I stick around. But the other folks don't feel that way, so, you know, I was telling my mother about this situation because she still lives in Texas, and you'd love her, she's very sweet. We were talking about how when I was a little girl, there was a guy that lived down on the river, on the San Antonio Riverwalk, named Bongo Joe. And he was called Bongo Joe because he played trashcan, like the bongo drums, and he would make up songs about you as you passed by. He was a sweet guy, and he was kind of an institution in San Antonio where I was raised. And then there wasn't any more Bongo Joe because the laws eliminated his ability to live as a homeless person without spending time in jail. They spent more money incarcerating people like him than they would have spent simply housing him or leaving him alone. Let's not be that kind of town. Let's not be those people. Please, I know you're not going to make the decision, but you know the people who are. Please intercede on our behalf. Thank you.
Thank you. Sue Sierra Lupe, followed by Allison Litz.
My name is Susie Arlupe, and I am in Emily Simples Ward. And I am the clinic manager for Occupy Medical and have been for the last five years. On May 7th, we had a dental clinic in the park, and it was a real honor for us to host it. We worked in conjunction with medical teams international and two volunteer dentists and their volunteer hygienists. We also had our very, very helpful doctor who was there triaging people with a pre-med student who has been our triage volunteer for almost three years. And I was delighted to be able to write his recommendation to medical school last night, I guess it was. We brought the Vayeen in, we already had a tent set up for people to relax. I am sure you can imagine getting ready for the dentist is a little, little tough on the nerves. We had one woman in particular who had been unhoused and was noted, she lived downtown oftentimes. We were able to win her trust a few years ago and offer her some prescription medication to help her with an infection that was escalating her mental illness as well. And she's now housed and is able to regulate her mental illness with some medication. And she came down to get her teeth extracted, she was very nervous because she had to have eight of them extracted. But this meant that she'd be able to get dentures in her upper jaw, and that's going to help her a lot. She is starting her own business now, and to be able to give a nice smile with teeth will not only make her business easier, but it'll also help improve her with her diet. She'll be able to chew foods that she was formerly just grinding up before putting in her mouth. These kind of things are thanks to the citizenship of the volunteers, many of who are behind me, and the other allied organizations that have worked with us all of these years. And then with your graciousness, offering us not only bathrooms downtown, but handwashing station, hygiene, hygiene, hygiene. And I also am very grateful for any other opportunity to be able to share more, more health and hygiene services for the people that really deserve them. The more that you offer organizations like my own, even small things, the more we can offer the people that really deserve care. Thank you.
Thank you. Ally Litz, followed by Wayne Martin.
Hello, my name is Ally Litz, Mayor Venice and council members. I live in River Road Community. Thank you for the opportunity to encourage the city of Eugene to divest from fossil fuel-related interests. Eugene's climate recovery ordinance is a commendable acknowledgement of global warming and the need to move from fossil fuels to sustainable energy sources. However, such plans mean little if they do not include action on both local and global levels. At the local levels, this means working to increase solar energy available or moving towards electric-powered city vehicles. The global warming is a global problem, and if at all possible, we must work on a global scale. Divestment from all companies supporting fossil fuel extraction, production, and usage is the single most important global climate action that the city can do. Several years ago, my husband and I realized the grave risks of global warming and its relationship with fossil fuel usage. We had our money in mutual funds, but it was evident that they all included companies supporting fossil fuel extraction and usage. So we divested. It was a big step, and it was unnerving, but we believed it was an effective and essential course of action to fight global warming, and it is. For the city of Eugene as well, divestment provides an effective and essential course of action to fight climate change on a global scale. The Earth's atmosphere is now at 400 parts per million. The frightening effects of the increasing warming are reported daily. We must all act promptly and rigorously. Divestment is not overreactive or extreme. Instead, it is an act of prudence and common sense. When we embrace our responsibility to preserve this Earth's habitat for the good of our children and all life, we are committed to doing everything we can to protect it from harm. Global warming equals harm. Divesting will uphold Eugene's commitment to effective and essential climate action on every possible front, both local and global. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Wayne Martin, followed by Jack Dresser.
Good evening, thank you for the opportunity to speak. My financial life changed dramatically in 2005. I'd like to describe that a little bit. I can remember some good luck in the 80s and 90s, because a lot of people like me were able to make some money on a house sale. A few years after that, I made a little more, had another sell-buy, had some more funds to invest. So I found a recommended money manager and started up a portfolio. His goal was to earn enough return to make me and my college kids happy. About that time, I made a trip to see my daughter and my son-in-law in North Carolina, where they were studying at Duke. As I was returning, getting ready to step on the plane, he, a student in social ethics, handed me a book. I'll tell you about that book. So, I was investing credibly. The money manager was doing his job. He bought funds, some bonds, a few stocks. It was a profit-designated portfolio. Among the stocks he bought were some shares of IBM, General Motors, Motorola, United Air, even Pepsi-Cola and a hotel chain. You know the stuff. Then I looked at the book on the airplane. The author emphasized that if your financial life does not uphold your mission in life, you are defeating your own purposes. Why gain profits from investments that are not doing anything to help vulnerable people, especially those who had for years been treated unequally? The poor, women, minorities, and the precious planet we live on. My charitable contributions to these causes were being nullified by my investments. The bank jarred, the book jarred me into recognition. I had to make an immediate change. I found somebody with an SRI expertise, that's socially responsible investing. My rule is, don't buy anything you wouldn't want to be the CEO of, and that probably includes US Bank. In the last 12 years, I have stayed even with the markets and the investments, uphold my values, and help even the playing fields, and help the planet.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jack Dresser, followed by Ruth Dumler.
Well, I hate to continue to beat on what I hope is an already-dead horse, which is US Bank, but obviously, you know, you guys have passed a number of resolutions that are incompatible with the business policies of US Bank, so... And you've been asked to get rid of them, to dump them next year when your depository relationship ends. Okay, but where do you go from there? If you look at the other Wall Street banks who have offices in Eugene, what do you got? You've got Wells Fargo, you've got Bank of America, you have JP Morgan Chase. Anyway, you know, you'd be going from bad to worse. I mean, these banks are terrible. They're all basic, I'm a psychologist, I just call them psychopathic institutions. Now, so what does that leave you with? Assuming you rule out Wall Street, you can go with a smaller bank like KeyBank, or Amcoa, or say Pacific Continental. They're all big enough to provide a full range of banking services for any city account. But there's even a better option, and it's being looked at all over the country in its public banking, forming your own municipal bank. Its public banking, of course, only exists in the United States and North Dakota, but it exists throughout much of the world. About half of the world, as a matter of fact, uses public banking now, including all the Islamic banks who never suffered in 2008. The advantages are many, and I've sent you guys an article that I've written, it's not quite published yet, sent it to all of you this evening. But the one advantage, of course, it returns all the revenues to the city. And it's being considered by Oakland, by Philadelphia, by Boston, and most importantly, most comparable probably Santa Fe, because Santa Fe is about the same size as Eugene. And they're really quite a ways along in looking at this option, and looking at the advantages of it, just the financial advantages. You don't have to worry about anything ethical, you can invest in exactly what you want, no toxic trade options or any of that. You can support public, you know, businesses and public interests that are local, that Wall Street would never have any interest in. And most importantly, maybe, from a fiduciary point of view, you get all the money back. It all comes back to the city, and it saves a huge amount of money.
Thank you. Ruth Dumler, followed by Darren Redlinger.
I'm really sorry I have to be here to talk about healthcare tonight. It's not something I really want to talk about. I hope, I think of my Canadian relatives, and I think of all the students, foreign students from all so many countries that lived with me. And they all have healthcare in their country. We don't. Even though it costs us twice as much to have the healthcare we provide, even though we don't live as long in our country, we just refuse to give healthcare to all our people. And there's a large segment in our community, right here in Eugene, that gets its help and depends on one organization called Occupy Medical. For five years, it's unbelievable, isn't it? For five years, every Saturday, every Sunday, excuse me, every Sunday, they get out early, put up all the tents they did for so many years at the Park Block, and before that at Occupy Medical, Occupy. Every Saturday for over five years now, every Sunday for over five years, they have been there giving healthcare for the people who don't have any healthcare. Most of them are homeless, but not all of them. A lot of them have some sort of medical care, but they can't pay what they're supposed to pay in order to get their insurance. So I really beg you to think about this. We have to do this for this growing segment in our community that need healthcare. They need a place, a place just so on Sundays they can come, set up their medical care, bring their volunteer doctors, their volunteer nurses, all the personnel that go along with the interviews. They need to meet, and they need a place to meet. And I do hope you'll think about it. They only have a short time before they have to find a place quickly. So I hope you'll talk to them, make a decision, and see that we don't go a day without, or a Sunday, I should say, without healthcare. Thank you.
Thank you. Darren Redlinger, followed by Leah Redlinger.
Darren Redlinger, Ward 3. I just wanted to thank all of you for all the work you've poured into the city, making this a wonderful city that is committed to the environment and committed to social responsibility. And I wanted to briefly express my support in following through on that with a tangible step of divesting from US Bank and ensuring that Eugene's financial allocations match our mission and values as a city. Thank you.
Thank you. Leah Redlinger, followed by... Leah Redlinger, followed by Deborah McGee.
Good evening. I'm Leah Redlinger, constituent of Councilor Zelenka. As an active and concerned community member like many already here this evening, I urge you to support Native rights and also our environment by divesting from all banks that fund DAPL either directly or indirectly. Thank you.
Thank you. Deborah McGee, followed by Jennifer Reddicky, maybe.
Good evening. My name is Deborah McGee. I've lived in the county, Peaceful Valley, for 30 years. Eugene is my city. I'm a volunteer and leader with 350 Eugene, which is a grassroots climate activist group dedicated to solving the climate crisis. I want to recognize the dedication and hard work of Misha Goldberg, Maria and Sophie Bybee, and Caitlin Bowman, Bowman, for organizing this amazing campaign and this effort today. If you're paying attention, I think you'll agree that we are in the fight of our lives. We have blown past 411 parts per million of carbon pollution, and we must keep the remaining fossil fuels in the ground because we know that 350 parts per million is the safe upper limit of carbon pollution in our atmosphere for our survival. We absolutely must create a just and sustainable future fueled by renewable energy sources, which at the same time respects the rights of all, especially Indigenous rights. Now is the time to step up our demands that educational institutions, retirement funds, cities, counties, private individuals, divest from the banks that fund the industries that endanger our future generations. Divestment is a powerful tool of the people to effect necessary change. To slow climate change, we need to rapidly reduce the global emissions caused by fossil fuels, biofuels, deforestation, wetlands, and agricultural soils. We need to also accelerate the removal of carbon dioxide that's already in the atmosphere. We know from 97% of the world's top scientists that burning fossil fuels has changed the basic chemistry of our home. The Earth as we knew it is gone. If we are to survive, we must change, and divesting from banks that are wrecking the planet is the morally right thing. Please divest 100% from U.S. Bank. Thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer Reddicky.
She left.
She left. Okay, well, couldn't get her name right, anyway. Stephen Mattis, followed by Laura Ohanian.
My name is Stephen Mattis. I'm resident of Ward One, and I am also here to support divesting from U.S. Bank. Construction of a pipeline is an act of violence. Even before you look at how they treated the water protectors at Standing Rock, just constructing the pipeline was already an act of violence. The companies behind the pipeline at Dakota and other pipelines around the country have demonstrated that they don't care about justice, they only care about money. We do care about justice, so we must take our money away from them. Thank you.
Thank you. Laura Ohanian, followed by Lori Powell.
Good evening. My name is Laura Ohanian. I'm in Emily Simples District, Ward. I consider divestment and choosing more positive projects in which to invest as community civil disobedience. We don't seem to have a lot of say in what happens, but we have some say in how it can Money really fuels all political decisions, and it's the only thing they recognize. So if we can withdraw our financial support from these banks, they'll have less funds with which to do their harms. I agree we should have state banks and municipal banks. I have a lot to say, but I'm, I'm done. Thanks.
Thank you. Lori Powell, followed by Ann Bowman.
Good evening, councilors, city manager, staff. My name is Lori Powell. I live in Ward One, and I'm here with 350 Eugene. We're looking forward to Council's work session concerning Eugene's transportation system plan this coming Wednesday at noon. We're anticipating your discussion with Rob Interfield concerning efforts to include in the TSB steps for specifically measuring CRO-mandated, community-based reductions in fossil fuel use and science-based greenhouse gas emission reductions. A brief overview on how the Lain Council of Government scenario planning relates to the TSB would be very helpful. This analysis is already complete and provides an excellent resource for guiding the measurement of transportation-related reductions in fossil fuel use and emissions. Also, I strongly urge you to support the proposed divest Eugene ordinance. This would be entirely consistent with Eugene's climate recovery ordinance and the city's resolution in support of the Standing Rock Water Protectors. For inspiration to follow this course and to vote in support of this ordinance, I urge you all to watch the newly released documentary called Awake, which is about Standing Rock and by directors Myron Dewey and Josh Fox. I think you'll agree that the images are enduring. I myself will never forget the images of the elders and youth being shot at by water cannons in sub-freezing temperatures last fall, in winter. And we don't want to be supporting corporations that endorse that kind of action. Thank you.
Thank you. Ann Bowman, followed by Sharon Cameron.
Hi, I'm Ann Bowman, and I live in Ward Two. I support the Indigenous people, and I love clean water, so I am here to support Eugene's divestment from U.S. Bank. Thank you.
Thank you. Sharon Cameron, followed by Jerry Smith. No Sharon Cameron?
I'm Jerry Smith, a retired social worker in Betty Taylor's district. I've been a social worker since 1965, and I retired and came to Eugene in 2001. For about nine years, I have volunteered at First Christian Church to help people in poverty and homelessness. And I notice that the situation that they face is worse, and it's getting worse every day. The last couple of weeks have been outrageously bad. One, more people are falling into destitution poverty. That's poverty with no income and no assets. And more people are not getting mental health services. Our jail is filled with mentally ill people that should be treated somewhere else. I'm not blaming the city of Eugene for this. I think that the county, the state, and the federal agencies should be doing more, and I keep asking you to, to press them, maybe with resolutions, I don't know what would do. Their failures affect us in Eugene. There's no good intervention our city police can do because there's no real support. Two weeks ago, we had a homicidal, actually, he was manslaughter convicted man screaming he wanted to kill somebody in our breakfast, and he had a weapon. Called the police, and when they got there, the best they could do was take the weapon away from him and tell him to go away. Of course, he didn't go away because he was having a mental health crisis. I told them he was, and they didn't, they didn't feel there was anything they could do about it. He came back after breaking some of our windows just because he was upset at First Christian He had quieted down a couple of days later. He told me that besides serving time for manslaughter, for killing somebody, he was diagnosed as schizophrenic with homicidal and suicidal tendencies. He's been released on our streets with no support, no follow-up, no income. One of the things he said, "If I kill somebody, they'll put me in jail for life. It's easier than living on these streets." And that's, that's that bad. And then, thank you.
Thank you. Otis Root, followed by Michael Carrigan. Otis? Yep, there you go.
Good evening, and thank you for all your work, all your hard work. And I'd like to acknowledge all the people here that have come in support of clean water and socially responsible investments. You guys are awesome. You people are awesome. I'm eating, I'm hungry. I come on behalf, um, my name's Otis Root. I live in Eugene. I'm a human being on this planet Earth. I do not know what ward I may have resided in. And I come on behalf of the ones that don't have any voice, okay? The little ones, the winged ones, the crawlers, the hoppers, the swimmers, the other inhabitants of this planet, the other residents of this city, the ones that don't have a voice, that cannot speak to you, that cannot come up here and reach this microphone and tell you, "We're being killed. We, we have homes too. We're being put out of our homes by these things that are happening throughout this civilized world." You know, did you wake up this morning thinking that your entire home would be gone when you left, when you came back home? Did you wake up this morning thinking that you may be poisoned to death? That's what's happening to the ones that don't have a voice, these young, these little ones, the insects, the bugs, the frogs, amphibians, the ones that live in the water, the fish and things. And they're all a part of this cycle, and we're a part of it. And we come, you know, we, we're related, and we, we are destroying their homes, we're poisoning them as well as ourselves. And they don't have any money, so they don't have a voice. Even if they had a voice, they don't have any money. And so here, this is the only power that I have to speak on their behalf, is to ask you to do the right thing and to think about the entire creation, you know, not just people. Everything in this creation is important. I don't, I try not to step on ants because, you know, I wouldn't want to be stepped on. But it's, it's that important, it's that big, and it's that small. You know, the housefly has a purpose. We all have a purpose. We all come, we all have homes, we all have the same things, they just look different. We're all given life, we're all a part of this, and we all have a say in this, except for these ones that don't have a voice, and that's why I'm here. I'm not an environmentalist, I'm not an activist, I'm an earth warrior, and I came to do battle.
Thank you. Michael Carrigan, followed by Joanna Brook.
Good evening. My name is Michael Carrigan. I live in Ward Seven, and this evening I'm speaking on behalf of Community Alliance of Lain County. CALC has been active in the campaign combating climate change with our allies 350 Eugene, and Eugene stands with Standing Rock. We feel strongly that the city of Eugene and all who live here must do all we can to ensure our kids, including my daughter, who's at Lain Community College, and all the creatures who live on our planet Earth have a future. Considering what's happening in Washington, D.C. with President Trump, it's up to local government to take the lead in fighting climate change. We urge you to follow the lead of the Eugene Human Rights Commission and support the proposal to have the city of Eugene divest all its funds from U.S. Bank and do it as soon as you can. This action is necessary because the bank has heavily invested in Dakota Access and Keystone XL Pipeline, which contribute to climate change and which put the safety of Indigenous people and their land at risk. By taking this step, you will further underscore the city's strong commitment to do all can to fight climate change. This action will be in sync with the resolution you passed last year proclaiming the city's support for the Standing Rock Sioux Tribe's opposition to the construction of the Dakota Access Pipeline, in which, this said, DAPL ran contrary to the city's values regarding social equity and environmental health. So this action will show the world that yet again, we in Eugene stand up for the planet and all who live on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Joanna Brook, followed by Robert Wilson.
Hello. I'm Joanna Brook. I'm resident of Ward One, and I offer you my gratitude for all the work that you do for the city. Very much appreciate being a citizen here. And I ask that you divest from U.S. Bank. I don't have any facts that anyone else hasn't already said, except that I believe that we each have to do what we can do now, and this is something that you can do now. So, thank you.
Thank you. Robert Wilson, followed by Cameron Hubby.
I have a little anxiety, so bear with me. I'm here about, Robert Wilson, I'm in Ward Seven. At one time or another, when I was homeless, I found a living in everybody's ward. But I'm here about the dog ban, and the city is trying to tell me that my service dog, does that count as a service dog because she's for a PHS against social anxiety? And, you know, chronically homeless for about 25 years, being told your worth was second-class citizen, and I finally found acceptance in Eugene. About a year and a half ago, I got housed up through the vet program at St. Vincent de Paul, and that's where it's come out, and now they tell me I can't make a living. Most of you have probably seen me downtown with my dog, she wears a cute little outfit that makes people smile for a living. Now they're telling me I'm not allowed to do that. And, you know, it hurts when you're being treated like a second-class citizen. The problem is not the people's disabilities and people with dogs downtown, it is the bad behavior. The law does not target the bad behavior, the public drunkenness. I've seen people all the time, high on heroin, high on meth, drunk in public, they call cutes. Sometimes they pick them up and drive them around for a little bit, sometimes they don't. And then they're back downtown an hour later, causing problems. There's still troublemakers downtown, and not a damn one have dogs. And I think the law fairly untargets the wrong people. And, you know, since the law went into effect, blood pressure medicine's doubled, my anxiety medicine's doubled, and, you know, I find it hard to sleep at night and everything else I get because, same way, I finally get acceptance, it's taken away. Thank you.
Thank you. Cameron Hubby, followed by Sarah Hubby. Nope, okay. Then we move on to Bernadette Barassa, followed by Nancy Wallace.
Good job on my name. My name's Bernadette Barassa. I don't live in the city, but just south of Towne, a ways, East Lain County. And my big message tonight is to ask you all to be very brave, because I think the times demand that of all of us. Throughout history, you know, people have evolved and adapted. They once thought the Earth was flat, and then there were people who were really frightened by the more scientifically-minded people who were saying, "No, let's look at science a little bit, and it's not really flat." And that was really frightening to a lot of people. And... And there are people today who are afraid of racial equality or paying women the same as men. There are still people afraid of these things. It's like, change really is difficult for us for some reason. We need security, we need things to kind of stay the same. And that's been the easiest route to take. But the place we've arrived at right now is really asking something else of the human animal, the human beings. We need to step it up, and we need to step it up very, very quickly. And someone outside used the phrase of an unholy alliance or marriage, an unholy marriage between money and power. And that's the direction that we've been kind of going in, and it served a purpose. It was kind of natural that that happened. But we just have to, like, change course a little bit now. And we have to get back in touch with integrity and higher values as we have a larger wealthy class and a larger poor class, and the middle class kind of goes by the wayside. I think most people here tonight are probably in the middle class and tending toward the other end, not too many billionaires or millionaires sitting here amongst us. But we have a certain power, and we're getting in touch with that, that we can do things. But we do have to have a certain willingness to find our inner courage and do what feels right. Personally, I don't like to even try to deal with facts and figures because I don't retain that kind of information. I kind of go from my heart. So that's what I'm asking you, you guys, to do, is get your heart involved when you make decisions, and don't be afraid.
Thank you. Nancy Wallace, followed by Rosalyn Brown, or Braun.
I'm Nancy Wallace, and I'm in Emily Semple's ward. Divesting from US Bank, it is really wonderful that we, as a community, have something concrete that we can actually do to exert our support, show our true support of environmental justice and the waters of the world, and that life on this planet may continue.
Thank you. Rosalyn Braun, followed by Stefan Strick.
Good evening. Thank you for your time. My name is Rosalyn Braun, and I'm an alumni of the University of Oregon and a concerned resident of Ward 2. Last spring, I sat in on the administrative office of the university for 10 weeks after the UL Foundation refused to discuss divesting from fossil fuels. I choose not to be a silent participant in my school's or my city's decisions to support businesses that are deeply invested in the destructive fossil fuel economy and the Dakota Access Pipeline. Pipelines threaten the air and the water quality for millions of people, and that Dakota Access violates sacred land that belongs to the Standing Rock Sioux Tribe. I strongly encourage the board to pass this ordinance and divest from the US Bank. When investment decisions affect the climate, we are all stakeholders. The city's decisions not only affect drinking water, but the future stability of the climate. The communities that are already being impacted deserve better. Our children and grandchildren deserve better. And every human on the Earth has the right to a liveable planet. Thank you.
Thank you. And our finally, final speaker is Stefan Strick.
G'day, everybody. As always, I am super, super stoked to be here. I encourage a lot more people to come down here and speak their minds. Last year's been an awesome year, this year's been even greater. First off, with this investment business, do what you want to do. Moving on, this thing with the dogs, my man Doc, with the little dog. I totally 110% support him. And we've got more than enough money in this city to take care of everybody. We've got a $330 million budget. Where's all that money going? Do we really need to fine hard-working, tax-paying citizens for having dogs downtown? I don't think so. Do we really need to fine people for smoking in the parks or drinking in the parks? I don't think so. I don't think so at all. God bless you. God bless us all, really. And also, God bless Donald Trump, who was working, President Donald Trump, I might add, who was working so hard, working with King Salman and Benjamin Netanyahu to organize peace in the Middle East. Honestly, with just barely 100 days in office, my President Trump has brought us closer to peace in the Middle East than we've been in like 50 years. Really, we all saw that parade, it's a great parade. Anyways, yes. There's a whole lot of things on this plate here today. So, really, do we seriously need to make up excuses to target the homeless, which are really just thinly veiled attempts to tax hard-working, tax-paying citizens? Absolutely not. You know, none of these bums, drug addicts downtown are going to be paying any of these fines that you give them for drinking in the park or having their dogs. The people who pay those fines are the people with jobs. You know, I was talking to a woman just outside the bank, you know, it could have been Betty Taylor's sister, saying that she's not going to come downtown anymore because she wants to, you know, have a place where she can bring her dog, you know? This is just ridiculous. You know, and we've got all these hobos coming from all over the country to come here and try and victimize our local people and the fantastic people that come to live here. You know, I live in South Eugene, and I've got a nice house. It's got a 30-foot ceiling, about the same as this place, the spiral staircase. I got a candy-red clawfoot bathtub that you can fit five women in. And I've got the pictures to prove it. It's fantastic. I live well. I drive a 2017 Chevy, got the Armani tie. I'm just a simple guy like that. And I encourage everybody else to step up to the plate and do what you want to do. You know, this Dakota Access thing, 98% of that was done by Obama, Democrats, the Democratic Party. If you really want to stand up to the Dakota Access Pipeline and big corporations and the corporate media, register Republican, vote Republican, thank you.
Thank you. And that closes the public forum. Do we have comments? I have Counselor Clark, Counselor Taylor, Counselor Semple.
Got to get up early in the morning, Betty.
Counselor Clark, you're on.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Manager, what's the most helpful, the best, the most appropriate manner in which counsel might, or a counselor might, weigh in on potential new park rules? When we're talking about the potential adoption of a park rule, I want to figure out the best way to give input on this that's not outside the process, obviously, so I'm trying to...
Yeah, I'll have to get back to you. I don't know what the best way will be, and I'll send the council an email or we'll send a note to the council the next day or two and just let you know, one, the current status of even the conversation, and, two, answer to your question.
Awesome. I mean, I know we could make a motion and give you direction, but I don't know that that's the most helpful way to go, so I just was looking for good advice there. Thank you, sir.
Counselor Taylor?
Thank you. I hope that we can find a way to stop this no alcohol in the parks. It's a part of building community, and I think we've heard from a lot of people who've made it clear that it's important, whether you drink or not. It's not a question of people wanting, everybody wanting to drink. People want to have a place to gather and the freedom to do something that people all over the world do, go to a park with some, with a sandwich and a bottle of wine. There's nothing wrong with that. I, and I think it's very, it's similar to the dog ban, which is something that makes people happy. We're legislating against simple pleasures that ordinary people can enjoy. And I think it's, we're making ourselves look ridiculous, and we're interfering with people's ability to assemble and to enjoy their lives in the... And some people say, "Well, we've already done the dog ban, I know, but we could retract it." Counsel did that. And it's, for all summer, people who find out about this say, "I can't believe it, you mean I can't take my dog downtown? I can't sit outside Davis and have a drink or a sandwich with my dog sitting beside me?" And there are people who say they will never come downtown again. I don't know what was meant by, I don't have a sister here, but someone mentioned a sister, but if I did have a, if I did have a sister, I hope she'd be on the right side. I mean, if she were here. But anyway, I think it's, I think both of those things are really wrong and interfering with, I can't say it too, I don't like to repeat myself, but it is just interfering with simple pleasures that people can afford, people who aren't wealthy, people who can't afford to pay $200 for a permit to have a drink in the park. And people who don't have their own estates or their own big parks at their homes where they can sit with their dogs or sit with their bottle of wine. I think that we should be trying to make life pleasant for people who live here. Thank you.
Counselor Semple?
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, as always, to everyone who came to speak. This means a lot to me that you take the time so I can listen to your concerns. I agree with Betty all the way, I had my own list of stuff to say. The park rules change bothered me as soon as I heard about it. Legally, we only needed to put the tiny ad in the legal section in the back of the RG, and I bet most of you didn't see it, I had to go look for it. If it weren't for the article in the RG, most people wouldn't have known about it to put out the public, to put out their response, both by emails and tonight. So I really want us to work towards more public outreach so we can continue to have public involvement. I also talked about the change in park rules at length with Kelly, and I just, I really disagree with the change in alcohol rules. We already have laws that we can use, and the argument that it would be simpler, I don't buy it. I think it becomes a classist problem, and I think it will be unequally enforced. And that's not okay with me. Some people say, "Well, the people who are doing it already will keep doing it." Well, some of them won't, you know? If they say it's against the rules, they just won't do it. And others will feel guilty about it. Do we really need to go back to the pot-smoking illegality paranoia? I would hope not. And I, of course, voted against the dog ban. I continue to walk in the downtown core every day without my dog. I do not see as many dogs, but I do see as many of the target audience. Tonight, about 5 o'clock, there were 20 people on one corner of Bermuda, no dogs. The dog ban affects a lot of people very deeply. And they do make a difference for people with PTSD and social anxiety. I've seen women that you wonder how they survive being homeless, that are in the Mission or inexpensive hotels, and they've got a small dog. You know, I kind of call them faux-dogs, but they're really important to them. And they don't even know about the ban, they're not our target audience. Their dogs are in dog strollers and baskets, and they can't come downtown. I think we need to stop being so puritanical and really look at our real problems. Give people a place to go, including the parks. Sandwich, wine, and a dog in the park.
Counselor Zelenka?
Mr. City Manager, can you provide the council with a short list, a list of all the actions we've been taking, the comprehensive list of all the actions we've been taking downtown to help with the problems that we've been experiencing, and with a brief description about what each one is? Including the dog ban, which is one of, what, about 15 different things? If you could do that as a, as a, as a email, that'd be great.
Any other comments?
I just want to wrap up and comment that we had 35 people signed up to testify today before council, and 20 of them talked about divestment and did a lot of research and had a lot of information. And I really want to express my appreciation for your organizing that and sharing that information and those insights with us. I think that is definitely food for thought, so thank you very much for doing that. And I think with that, we are closed with this part of the meeting, and we can move on to the rest of our agenda. Thank you all very much for coming.
Okay, next up is the consent calendar.
I move to approve the items on the consent calendar.
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor? Two, three, four, five, six. Counselor Sarret?
I vote yes.
All right, all in favor, that passes, thank you. Next up, manager, do you need to explain this in any way, or this ordinance?
I don't, I would be happy to do that for the viewing audience, just so they have a quick synopsis of what this is. So this is an ordinance amending Eugene Springfield Metro Area General Plan policy. And a public hearing was held on May 15 to hear testimony regarding a proposed text amendment to the Parks and Recreation Facilities element of the metro plan. One individual testified, but did not address the matter of this ordinance. No written testimony was submitted, and there were no questions or discussion by city councilors. The Planning Commission held a public hearing deliberated on March 14. No one provided testimony, and the Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval. The proposed ordinance would amend the metro plan so that the city can adopt the new Eugene Parks and Recreation System Plan as an aspirational plan rather than a land-use plan. Timing for adoption of this ordinance is important as this policy will determine how the Parks and Rec System Plan will be formulated and adopted.
I move to approve Council Bill 5175, an ordinance to amend the Metro Plan Policy H-2 as written in Attachment A. Second.
Any discussion, questions? Counselor Clark?
Carol, I have a couple of questions, I see her sitting back there, if that's all right, sir. I... This one gives me pause a little bit from conversations I've had over the years in our previous incarnation of parks plan and the remand and everything else that's involved. So I want to understand the effect of this a little bit better, okay? It gives me pause to want to get more information over time rather than act this evening, but I don't sense I have a lot of support for doing so, so I'm going to just drill down a little. If we do this, we are still going to use the exact same plan, the aspirational plan, for use for calculation of SDCs. Would I be correction, correct in saying that?
Yes, when our new plan is adopted, it will contain a project list. And that project list will be used in the new SDC methodology.
Right. And SDCs, again, for anybody watching, this is the amount of money that we charge anybody who builds something because we want growth to pay for itself, growth being a land-use process. We want growth to pay for itself, and thus, its share of impact on the already existing system. So we create system development charges. I have a problem with not calling the act of saying, "We're going to make these parks, and we're going to charge people for their effect on the demand for parks," and without the legal recourse to act in court as a land-use decision, because in... the legal recourse to act in court as a land-use decision, because in fact it is, and we're charging people money. So I'm, how much of the current project list will be transferred to the new project list? Roughly what percentage? Uncompleted in current project list will be involved in the new one?
I honestly couldn't speculate. I'd need to do a comparison of the two. Certainly, certainly, there are projects that have been completed and will not transfer over. There are still some projects that are on the original list that have not been completed. So there certainly will be some.
Here's why that one bothers me. And you know this, but this is for the benefit of my colleagues and those people watching. We've been calculating SDCs on this 20-year list for the last, what, 12 years that this previous has been in place, right? So for 12 years, we've been charging system development charges based on what we're going to build, but we didn't build it all. And now we're going to put it on the new list and create new SDCs. And we may even put out a bond where we charge people to build some of this stuff that we never built. My problem is that it plays too fast and loose with the land-use process in the first place. And to formally disconnect that, it seems like we're asking for a lawsuit. I know no one spoke at the public hearing. I know you haven't received notice of concerns. I know there are some. So I would prefer that we postpone this and have more of a discussion about it, but I don't know I would have the votes. So I guess I, my only recourse is to vote no.
If I could, might be able to provide a little clarification of the way, where we are right now. After the remand from Luba, we had a, the Project PROS Comprehensive Plan, and it was remanded by Luba because it was an aspirational plan. And you had a, this metro plan policy that basically said you needed to adopt it as a refinement to the metro plan. In light of that remand, what was adopted by council was what was called, what is called and is in place right now is the PROS Project and Priority List. That is your SDC plan. So, and that is adopted as a function of our SDC statutes, ORS 223309. You adopted them by resolution as your SDC plan. So if you go to your, the current PROS Project and Priorities List, that is the plan that was adopted statutorily to comply with SDCs. It was not adopted as a land-use. It was, and-
So it's the SDC methodology where the appropriate appeal would take place? Is that what I'm hearing you say?
So, but it's not a land-use decision. And the SDC statutes even specifically say it's not a land-use decision. The statutes allow for projects to come and go on those lists, so long as you're not amending the methodology itself. But you can change the projects, and the statutes are very specific about that. So having a, the plan itself, that, so if now we're going to be adopting in the plan that is going to serve as our SDC plan, it's not going to be a change from where you are today, in the sense that today, our SDC Project and Priorities List is not adopted as a land-use plan, because the statutes are very clear, it doesn't need to be. The only function that said it needed to be adopted as a land-use plan was our metro plan. And that was the basis of the remand.
Thank you for that clarification. The only thing I would say, I see zero, but I don't know that I ran out here.
You did, you ran out.
I guess I would say, if that's clear to all my colleagues, please vote. If it's not, don't you think we should talk about it some more? Before we do?
I would second that motion.
Could you put me down for a second round then? If no one else?
There wasn't a motion.
No. She's just being, and I may do that in a minute here, so.
So any other, any other comments? Counselor Semple?
I have to admit that I really don't know much about this. And if I voted, I would just be blindly following the majority. So I wouldn't mind postponing it even a minimal amount of time so I could catch up.
So can I just ask a question? Are there any time issues associated with this motion?
We do plan on bringing to you in the fall our new Parks and Recreation System Plan. How that is formulated and how it is adopted does depend on this action. And so the sooner we have this information, really, the better, and the sooner we can begin preparing the plan in the correct format.
And so can you give us some indication of how much time you need, would need to?
Certainly before you go on break.
Okay. Okay. Counselor Clark?
I want to say two things that are important. Number one, I don't think I have to vote. So I'm, I'm going to vote no, but I don't think there are enough votes for us to postpone here at the table. But I will want to make sure I say this. I think, I know I got at least one, and I think I may have gotten two emails desperately trying to schedule time with me so they could, so Parks folks could explain and have a long conversation with me about this. And I didn't have time to do it. So I don't want them getting any kind of input that maybe they should have talked to councilors in advance, because they tried really hard, and it was me that didn't schedule the time.
And if I may, I've certainly reached out to parties involved on numerous occasions and haven't been taken up on my offer to talk.
And I'll just use some names, because I don't think I'll get in trouble from doing that. I spoke to a couple of people, too, remembering the history on this and knowing that there, I have a colleague who no longer lives in Eugene, who I worked quite a lot with, who worked with an organization locally who dealt with this and was always very hot about it and thought it was wrong. And I couldn't talk with her about why, under the circumstances. She doesn't live here anymore. There is another local land-use attorney that I had been told had concerns about this. And I just didn't get the chance to talk with him and have him explain his concerns to me, but was, had some strong concerns. Mr., it was Bill.
Same person I've been reaching out to.
Yeah, and I've heard he's got some really strong concerns here. So I don't know, I take some people's, I take everyone's opinion very seriously, but there are some experts in certain fields that I listen to on things like this. He's a voice that makes some sense often, so hmm. I guess I'll just vote no and look to find a way to address this differently, I guess.
Okay. Any other comments? Counselor Pryor?
Just a question. Do we generally construct projects with SDC money every year? Is there an ongoing list of projects that are done every year, or does it kind of go in spurts or cycles?
Every year, we do construct projects with SDC funds, yes.
Okay. And SDC funds can only be used on projects to increase, to meet the demand for new?
There is, there are two different types of SDCs. About two-thirds of the SDC dollars can only be used to increase capacity. That's the improvement portion. Then there's a reimbursement portion, which is about a third of the total, which can go into renovating the existing system.
Right, okay, good. And the rates that are calculated to charge to somebody who builds something, I realize those rates take into account there's an entire aspirational list of projects that we would like to build. But is the rate calculated to try to collect that much money in five years, 10 years, 20 years? Or is it really collected more from the sense of what it takes to complete a certain number of projects within a certain amount of time? In other words, are we trying to raise all the money quickly, or do we understand that it's going to take a while to do?
I believe the current methodology is based on a 20-year project list.
Okay, so the rate is basically calculated on a 20-year cycle?
Correct. Current methodology.
Okay. And so, out of curiosity, is the amount of money that we will typically raise in a year through SDCs leave a surplus after we've built SDC-related projects? Or do the two amounts tend to kind of even out?
Well, there's a lot of factors that go into that.
Yeah, I'm looking for something rough.
The largest factor, we have not spent all of our SDC funds in recent years. We have spent the reimbursement funds, so those that go towards park renovations. Those that go towards improvements, we have not been able to spend, as you know, because we don't have the maintenance capacity to care for new parks. So it's not that we don't have the SDC funds, it's that we don't have the operational funds. So that's why we are currently talking to you about that issue.
Yeah, so you're collecting SDCs with the intention of trying to build something, something new.
Yes.
But you're not going to build it unless you know how to take care of it.
Right.
And that's been a conscious decision on your part?
Yes.
Okay. I wanted to get a sense of the context for how the SDCs are working. And so would you say that we've not been constructing new projects for a significant amount of time, or has it only been a relatively short amount of time?
About five years.
Okay, about five years. So we're kind of, we kind of got a backlog of new projects we'd like to build.
We do.
But the challenge is, not that we don't have the SDC money to build them, it's that we don't have the operational money to take care of them if we do build them.
Correct.
Okay. So the problem from that standpoint is not with the SDC per se. That system is working. The backlog is developing, not within the SDC system, the backlog is developing more in terms of the general fund and the operational budget.
Yes.
And so if we really wanted to kind of break that logjam and get those projects going, we would need to figure out a way to start funding the way to take care of them once we get them built.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. I wanted the clarification.
Okay, any other comments? Alan, sorry. Counselor Zelenka?
Yeah, Counselor Pryor answered my first, or made my first point. The second one is, you mentioned that depending on the action we take would modify or not modify the plan that you're, that you're building. Can you get into more detail about that? What would, what would you do differently if we decided to make this a land-use document?
Well, I think we would have a couple of options that we would need to look at. The first is that we would adopt it as a land-use plan. The second is that we would do what we did 10, 12 years ago with the PROS plan. We had a project list, as Catherine described earlier, that was adopted as a SDC project list. And then our, the rest of the plan, the aspirational plan, simply did not have the weight of council policy behind it. It is an unadopted plan. We would like to be able to combine those two and have the entirety of the Parks and Recreation System Plan adopted as city policy.
Yes, so would I. So if it were adopted as a land-use plan, what difference does that make? What rights in the land-use arena are then granted to folks in our community that they wouldn't otherwise have? Or said differently, what would the council do differently if we had, if this were a land-use document versus an aspirational plan?
I might ask for Catherine's input here, but from Parks' perspective, we have no desire to regulate private property land, which is what a land-use policy would allow us to do. We, this is an aspirational plan. We own the land that we work with, and so we have no need for the land use. And so I don't know if Catherine can add anything.
So having it, Eugene is very robust in its park planning. And so part of having it be, well, part of the metro plan is, look, you need to do some long-range planning for your parks. We, this, we're clearly doing that. So the benefit of having it a refinement to the metro plan, when it really is an internal direction aspirational, this is what we want our long-range planning to do, the next step of, well, it's adopted as a refinement, it really is a process issue. I mean, that's what it comes down to. Our process would look entirely different, just because there's certain requirements for adopting a land-use plan. It would also, because the statutes around SDCs are so clear about what is within the council's purview of changing lists and how the 223309 statutory framework works, we would want to do what we did 10 years ago and separate them off, so that you would have your, let's say you didn't repeal this, you would have your separate land-use long-range parks plan that's adopted as a refinement to the metro plan, and then you would have your separate PROS Project and Priorities List. That's your SDC project and plan. Because of the way the statutory structure is, you wouldn't want to blend those together, because anytime you wanted to change your project list for the SDCs, which the statutes give you the ability to do, if it was almed into your land-use plan, you'd have to go to your, through your land-use planning process to change that list. So you'd actually be needlessly restricting your ability to change something by making it a part of the land-use plan.
Would that be a metro plan amendment?
It would.
If you wanted to change it?
Yes, in the sense that right now, I mean, our refinement plan amendment process is very similar to the metro plan. It's a single jurisdictional, so it wouldn't have to go to Lane County or Springfield. But the, it's why you saw what we did 10 years ago, which is create that PROS Project and Priorities List, when it's its own little bound copy. And the resolution even says, this is our ORS 223309 plan. It's our SDC plan for purposes of Parks SDCs. And we'd want that to happen again. We'd want that divide to occur again, if you want to keep this metro plan amendment, or metro plan provision, excuse me.
Thank you, that's clear. Would the list of parks that we had on our 20-year plan, most of which we can't fund because we can't operate them and maintain them, would that change at all whether or not it was a land-use plan or an aspirational plan?
I wouldn't see that list changing, no.
Okay. Maybe Counselor Clark, and you're up next, you can explain a little more about why you want it to be a land-use document.
Counselor Clark?
Thank you, Mayor. That was really nice segue there, by the way. Just call me Mr. Segway. That got teed up really nicely. Because we're charging people money for a service we're not providing. We're charging SDCs every day, and we're not building the parks. That's nobody's, that's not the, that's, but that's a kind of a policy-level decision. And there's, for me, it's not just that we do that. It's not, I appreciate Counselor Pryor's questions about kind of clarifying around the system that we've got and how it works and is it working, you know? But there's a fundamental, fundamentally unjust thing that we're doing, not with intent, but we're saying, hey, you guys, when you build new stuff, which by the way, we want you to build, you have to pay your own way. You have to pay for the new parks that are going to be necessary, because, you know, you're going to have new demand when you build those new things. But we're not actually using the money we're charging them to do the things we say we need to charge them for. For me, the land-use process exists to make sure that all the decisions at the end of the day are reviewable in court, get dealt with justly. And I, what I was saying was, I don't know enough about how, what the effect of this decision is and whether I'm affecting someone's rights negatively. And I know that there's enough complexity in it that I'm, I'm not comfortable changing our system while it might have an impact on people's rights in this way. So I wanted to take a little more time. Is our decision tonight a part of a multi-step process? In other words, does the county have to make a similar decision?
No.
Or we can unilaterally decide to do this?
This is a Eugene-only decision.
Yeah, I, I'll just say again, I'll vote no. If any of, if a majority of my colleagues do, my, my motion immediately would be to schedule a work session, get better educated, talk about it some more, and perhaps then have this be nothing more than a postponement. But I can't support doing this, because there's just too many potential things I don't understand about it yet.
Counselor Evans?
So let me ask this question. I think I already know the answer. You should never ask a question you don't know the answer to. But are we, are, do, we do not, as we collect SDC charges, we're not going to be spending it on anything else other than what we collect it for, correct?
Correct. There is the project list, and there's a whole methodology that identifies what percentage of the project can be paid for by SDCs. We cannot use SDCs unless they are, they meet that methodology in that project list.
So basically, we're banking that money until we get in a position so that we can ultimately develop those parks and those other deals. So, you know, I just want people to understand that out there, that, you know, we're not just taking this money and spending it somewhere else. But, okay, eventually, at some point, we're going to, you know, develop that- develop that infrastructure.
Yes.
Once we figure out how to maintain and operate it.
Okay, so we do have a motion on the table. It has been seconded. Are we ready to vote? All in favor of the motion? Five in favor. Counselor Cyret?
I vote yes.
Six in favor, all opposed, one, it passes. And thank you very much for your explanations. Oh, did someone abstain?
I voted.
No, she voted.
No.
She voted. Okay.
I know that. I thought about it hard because I really didn't want to vote yet, but evidently I had to.
She voted yes. Okay, we're on. All right, all right. Enough. Okay. The next one, manager?
This is an ordinance concerning utility service to support economic development in the industrial corridor community organization. And this item is for council action on the land use code amendment intended to facilitate economic development opportunities within an area known as the industrial corridor in northwest Eugene. The proposed land use code amendment would require binding annexation agreements and enable extension of sanitary sewer and water service outside the city limits where necessary to allow industrial development to proceed efficiently in the area where annexation is not currently possible. The planning commission has unanimously recommended that council approve this amendment. And at the council's recent public hearing, one person spoke in favor on behalf of the chamber. No opposing testimony has been received to date.
Thank you. Motion?
I move to adopt Council Bill 5174, an ordinance concerning utility service to support economic development in the industrial corridor. Second?
Any discussion? All in, are we ready to vote? All in favor? One, two, three. Counselor Cyret?
I vote yes.
Okay, seven in favor, none opposed, so that passes. Thank you. And finally, manager?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a resolution granting a Measure 49 claim and waiving a provision of Chapter 9 of the ordinance. And the council is asked to set a date to close the record on a Measure 49 claim submitted by Chad and Katie Wilson for the alleged reduction of fair market value to their property located at 1777 East 30th Avenue. Measure 49 claims are authorized and regulated by state law. A public hearing on this measure, on this claim, was held on January 17. At that meeting, the council voted to keep the record open for submittal of written testimony as well as rebuttal argument and evidence to enable the council to adopt a resolution approving or denying the claim by April 1. Subsequently, the claimant's attorney extended the deadline for decision-making by a total of 90 days, which moves the city's decision deadline to June 30. Following the close of the record, a council work session will be held June 21 to discuss testimony, answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. We have a motion? Next side.
I move to close the record for the Wilson Measure 49 claim at 5:00 PM on June 5, 2017. I further move to close the claimant's rebuttal period at 5:00 PM on June 12, 2017. Second?
Any discussion or questions? All in favor? One, two, three, four, five, six. Counselor Cyret?
I vote yes.
Seven in favor, none opposed, and that passes. Thank you very much. We have a final, you know, committee reports and items of interest, but given the time, I'm assuming nobody really wants to say for that.
Oh, I object to that. I want something.
You have, you, you have something, okay. So we will go on to items of interest then. Counselor Semple?
I'd like to ask for a work session, a process work session on motions before I'm blindsided by another motion, surprise attack, robbing resources from one ward to another. This is critical to me. I've asked for it, and I really think we need to do it.
So I will clarify, that was on the agenda for today, but the, the executive session went so long. And so that is exactly the work session we are now going to have on Wednesday.
You promised me?
Well, you all have control over how much you talk, so.
So it's coming first?
So it's, we have a, we can either do it first or second, yes. Yeah. We have one other item. We have Transportation System Plan on the agenda.
Well, I know that that's really, really important, and it has the possibility of taking up the whole time. I don't know how long a motion process work session takes, but I, you know, been waiting since January.
We're scheduling it for 45 minutes. The other half of the schedule would be the Transportation System Plan, which is time-sensitive. So we will do both, but it's not the only process session we have scheduled. So we will do that in pieces. That's my proposal now. And if it turns out we need more time, we will adjust. Counselor Taylor?
Thank you. First thing I want to say is I object to having items at this time.
Right, I get it.
We used to have them at the beginning of an evening meeting when people were fresh and the audience was fresh. And by now, nobody cares what we're saying. But I, I think it should be back, it should be, be at the beginning of the afternoon session. I, and I want to ask when we're going to have, I know we're sometime going to talk about nuisances, but nuisance, many of the nuisances are urgent, it's an urgent matter. When there's dry grass in your neighbor's yard, it's urgent. And we still haven't done anything about that.
That is on the agenda for next week.
I know it's on the agenda, but it's late. And then I wanted to know when we're doing the next, the next step of the Keesy naming, naming Keesy Square. We did vote to do this, to start the process, and then it just died.
Well, I don't know if it died. We'll send you a note on what the process actually is. So you've initiated, you've done some action, and so we're, we can get back to you on what the process is, and then we'll eventually come back to you after we finish that process.
I hope eventually isn't too long, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Clark?
Thank you, Mayor. I was just going to say, I too have been waiting, I think since the end of the last calendar year, for us to talk about this. So I'm happy we're doing that on Wednesday. And this is the second time, by the way, in one meeting where I've agreed with Counselor Taylor on something, and you know how that makes me crazy. So I, I think we should have items at the beginning of our Monday afternoon work session, like that. By the way, that's when it used to be the appropriate time for a counselor to bring up a motion that they had been working on or that they wanted to propose. But we have an unwritten rule of, let's not surprise each other with things. And so if we don't have a place where those surprises go, then they can't help but be surprises when they're dropped in. And that's why, one of the reasons I want to do that, because I don't want to surprise people. But there are things that need to be addressed from my perspective too. So I, I certainly hope we're doing that Wednesday and that it won't be moved again. Thank you.
I think we recognize the urgency of it. And who else? Counselor Evans and Counselor Pryor?
You know, I, I think that, I appreciate that we're going to have this discussion on Wednesday. But I do think that we need to, you know, and I think, I'm hoping that this is going to come up shortly, I'm losing my voice, is that we have a, we have a fundamental retreat, you know, before we come back as a full council in the fall and when we have eight full members back in council. And that that retreat be, you know, really focused on more of the global issues of our operations, our processes as a council, as, you know, in general, and how we move forward. Because there's a lot of things that were done, you know, you know, before the new mayor took, took office that I think we need to revisit in some form or fashion and kind of get our, you know, bearings again. And I think that that would be an appropriate time to do that because we are going to have a new counselor, and we're going to have to get she or he up to speed and all that sort of thing. And so, you know, I think it would be really good. I remember having a retreat not too long after I came on council. You know, I think it was like in 2013 or 2014. And I really appreciated that we had a consistent kind of regular yearly retreat to kind of discuss various issues. And I think that it would be appropriate if we were able to set that time either, you know, before we come back in the fall or before we come back in the session in January. Usually, January was the time we did it, or February was, was the time we did it, after we seated the new council and then, and the new mayor.
Okay.
So either way.
Okay, that's great. Counselor Pryor?
Yes, and yes. I think we need both. And I love to hear us beginning to talk seriously about what's good governance, what's, what's good process. Because I think, you know, if we do things well, it really sets a good tone for the decisions that we make. So I too really encourage that we talk on Wednesday very specifically about the best way to work issues. I'm not, I don't think we need to go into the broad stuff because I do think a retreat is an absolutely fabulous idea. It's like a checkup. And, you know, everybody needs to have a checkup periodically just to make sure all the different parts are working properly. But I think on Wednesday, we can talk very specifically about those aspects of our process that could keep us from surprising each other. And I think that is a very important discussion, that I think there's ways we can approach very important topics in a way that, that works them well and doesn't result in surprises and results in us handling them in the right order. And I think we could probably do that on Wednesday, and I'm hoping we could do it relatively quickly. So I would second the fact, I think it's very important for us to talk about it Wednesday.
Okay, thank you. I think, one more? Okay?
It's about, if we have a retreat, how does that work in to be public? You know, do we tape it?
Yeah, it could be, yeah. It could be, it could be.
Well, if we're all talking together, we have a quorum. Is that legal?
So it could, we could even, you know, we can pick a location.
Yeah, what we've done in the past is, they are public meetings. You get posted as public meetings, people can be there and participate. And then oftentimes, they're recorded, just like any other meeting.
Just wanted to check.
Thank you all, and I think we can call this meeting adjourned.